Or not. All right, I'm going to call today's meeting of the Town Council to order. It is 3:00 on Tuesday, June the 20th. Can we get a roll call vote, please, Hillary?
Councilmember Reeves?
Here.
Councilmember McKee Cant?
Here.
Councilmember Tripp?
Here.
Vice Mayor Knight?
Here.
Mayor Moller?
Here. Can we all stand, please, and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And now I would like where it's time to adopt today's agenda. Do we have a motion and a second on the adoption?
Move adoption of the agenda?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second, and we're going to do electronic voting. My screen is refreshing.
I'll go ahead and take a voice vote. I see your vote, Vice Mayor Knight, and I see Councilmember McKee Cant's vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have a proclamation that's celebrating July as Parks and Recreation Month nationwide. So Samantha, would you like to join me at the podium, please?
She knows the process for sure.
It's great to have somebody I know right here. This is great. There we go. This is a proclamation in recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the town of Yountville, and whereas Parks and Recreation serves multiple purposes as it is not, it not only promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental well-being of individuals residing near parks and engaging in activities at the community center, but also encourages spending time in nature. And whereas Parks and Recreation has a positive impact on mental health, enhancing cognitive performance, overall well-being, and even alleviating conditions such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, and walking paths, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation not only creates community through spaces and events for gathering, celebrating, learning, and personal growth, but also plays a critical role in childhood development through programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programs, youth sports, and environmental education. Whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of a local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the town of Yountville and Napa County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, Margie Moller, Mayor of the town of Yountville, along with the Town Council, do hereby proclaim July 23rd as Parks and Recreation Month. And I'm so pleased to be able to give it to Samantha, our Parks and Recreation Director. So.
Say a few words. So obviously, not just this month, but every month. It is my honor and my team's honor to serve the community here in Yountville, our residents and our visitors. And we work really hard to be nimble and adaptive to what our community's needs are, whether that's through tragedies or emergencies or just trying to make sure that people have somewhere to connect with other people on a regular basis. So it is our honor to do that and my honor to be here to accept this for us. And we hope that people will come out, not just in July, where we have a lot of fun things going on, the Fourth of July Festival, music's in the park, movies in the park, but just all year round, really take a look at what we do. And I'm pretty sure everyone could find something that excites or interests them in our lineup. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thanks so much for everything you do.
Mayor, just one comment.
Yes.
I just, it would be remiss of me to not also just thank Director Holland and the Parks and Rec Department for all the work you do. And I think, I've been, I think, saying this for a little bit of time, that when you look at all the work you do, it's just not Parks and Rec. That when it comes to emergency events in this community, you are the Community Services Department for this community. So please thank all your staff and for all the work they do. And maybe also as a point of personal privilege, I want to thank you and Recreation Supervisor Jennifer Carvallo, because you really are the backbone of our Parks and Rec Department, and we appreciate, as a community, all the work you do. And the last thing is that I would definitely put a recommendation for people to come out to a movie in the park, because there is nothing like on a fall eve, or a fall, late summer, fall evening, to see hundreds of children that are there enjoying themselves. It's a little unique for Yountville, how many families and children are there, but it is just a joy to see them there, and the Fire Department there, and staff providing an opportunity for people to have a fun evening. So thank you for all you do.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we've got public comment. And this is public comment on matters that are not listed on the agenda. Do we have any email submitted public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we received one comment. From Kim Cook. Town Council members and mayor, I would like to ask you to take a deep look into our tree policies due to several different recent issues that have occurred in town. One, many years ago, I do not know how many, there was a list made of the protected trees in town, and the trees were all given numbered tags. As far as I know, this list has never been updated, and I believe it might be time to do so. Trees have grown, and some that are untagged have become more prominent and deserve the town's long-term protection. This list also puts the trees that are on public property on the maintenance list for future care and observation. There is also a development project coming into town, and the private property has a very large and beautiful oak tree on the property. We should all do what we can to make sure that tree is on that list and protected. Two, the municipal code has measures in place that protect trees in town. The establishment of a tree protection zone in the code lays out specific requirements when there is construction in close proximity of our oak trees. There was a recent incident of a large oak tree being unprotected during construction, which resulted in the death of the tree. Three, I believe the removal of significant trees, perhaps trees over a certain DBH, should require more oversight than just one consultant's opinion. There was a recent incident of a very large tree being removed from a property in town. All visual indications before and after removal were that the tree was healthy. Four, tree care professionals that I've worked with will always have saved a removal of large trees for late August due to the likelihood of active nests in the trees in spring and early summer. This can be dependent on the type of tree, so that should be a part of the factor. But perhaps that can be part of the consideration of the town when issuing tree removal permits. There was a recent incident of a very large tree being removed from a property in town that resulted in causing a nesting pair of hawks great distress. Thank you for your time, Kim.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment from the audience? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close public comments.
Mayor, I just have one question. Because of the letter we've received from the resident Kimberly Cook, I'm willing to wait for, in terms of the process of the meeting, until the end for a council discussion. But I am interested in the council considering agendizing a review of our Chapter 17, the Tree Preservation and Management Program. So I'm happy to wait till the end of the meeting when we do that. But if that's okay, I just want to give people just a general heads up that I think it's important that we take the time to work with staff to review that chapter of our municipal code. Thank you.
Now it's time for our consent calendar. We have seven items, A through G. And do we have any public comment on our consent? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion and a second.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Are we going to see a screen, or you want to just call? Should I call for the vote?
You should see a screen, Mayor.
Okay.
It bypassed the motioning, too, so maybe.
Would you like to refresh your screen, Councilmember Reeves? We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we have presentation. We have three presentations. The first one is Napa Schools for Climate Action, Napa Unified School District Students Promoting Climate Education and Legislation Within the Community. So can you come up to the podium, please?
Hello, my name is Allison.
My name's Liliana.
And we are with Napa Schools for Climate Action today. First, I would like to start this off by thanking Councilmember Reeves and Councilmember Trippi for hearing us out for the first time and giving us this opportunity to be with you all today and share this with you. So a little bit about Napa Schools for Climate Action is that we were founded in 2018 by Jim Wilson and some other high school students. And ever since then, we've been advocating for climate action all over Napa County, which is why we are here today. A little bit about me is I'm an upcoming American Canyon High School senior. I'm president of the American Canyon High School Environmental Club. We both intern for Congressman Mike Thompson. And some other things I like to do are volunteer at the library. Hi, everyone.
You can move the microphone. There you go.
So my name's Liliana. I'm an upcoming junior at Napa High School. And some other things I'm a part of besides Schools for Climate Action is I'm currently interning at the Napa Sierra Club. I've also interned at Napa Resource Conservation District. I'm the co-president of the NHS Environmental Club. And I've also been a part of the Jameson Humane Program, which is called LEAP. And my main interest is environmental law. So we'd like to talk about Jim Wilson a little bit. He's our community advisor. He's like our mentor. Jim, would you like to say anything? Little later. Got you. No school should be a silent witness to the climate crisis. And this is the Napa Schools for Climate Action motto. And with this motto, we hope to empower students to take action regarding the climate emergency in their own communities. And some recent Napa Schools for Climate Action accomplishments. So this past year, all cities and county declared a climate emergency and committed to the net-zero emissions by by or before 2030 in solidarity with the NVSD 2030 Commitment. This past year, Calistoga and American Canyon also took action to ban new and expanding gas stations. This last September, American Canyon Ad Hoc Climate Committee helped the City Council of American Canyon to agree on a climate action plan to achieve net-zero emissions by or before 2030. Also, this past year, the city of Napa was the first to make the 2030 net-zero deadline goal a guiding principle in its general plan. And most recently, this April, the Napa City Council passed a moratorium on new and expanding gas stations. So the problem we've been talking about through this presentation is that we are in a climate crisis. We like to specifically use the term crisis because when we hear global warming or climate change, it doesn't exactly ring that bell in your head. But when you hear crisis, it kind of sets a reaction off that we need to act now, which is what we need to do and which is why we are here today. And we would like to ask you for your help. So our two asks are to ban new and expanding gas stations in Yountville, and number two, to maintain and enhance forests as net carbon sinks in Yountville. So our first ask is that we establish an ordinance which calls for the prohibition of building new gas stations and expanding the current one in Yountville. We do recognize that this is a very small town and that there is one gas station, but that's all the more reason why we can do it. We've already achieved this goal in American Canyon and Calistoga, and we're also working with Napa now. And we want to help switch the use of fossil fuels to the use of renewable energy, especially with California regulating, regulators passing rules that ban new gas-powered cars by 2035. So our goal is to reach net-zero emissions by or before 2030. Fossil fuel combustion contributes to 75% of all greenhouse gas emissions and almost 90% of all carbon dioxide emissions, which further traps the earth in a heat of, in a blanket of heat. The temperature has already been raised by 1.2 degrees Celsius. And if we continue this trend, it will lead to worsen natural disasters, global sea level rise, and among other different types of consequences. Hence why we want to call this a climate crisis. So our second ask is to maintain and enhance forests as net carbon sinks in the city of Yountville. And this ask is a part of our bigger project, which is titled, Are We Losing Faster Than We Are Gaining? And the goal with this project is to protect and enhance carbon stored by the urban forest in the city of Yountville. And this includes stop cutting down trees as this releases even more carbon into the atmosphere, which causes more greenhouse gases, which causes also the blanket of heat, which increases the global temperature. This also calls for protecting all living trees. And this is vital as it is really important to keep the living trees safe because we do not have enough time left in the climate emergency to wait for newly seeded and planted trees to grow to this mature age at which they can sequester carbon at a similar rate as the currently old and mature trees that are living today. And some of the science behind this goal is that trees and forests are frontline defense against climate breakdown. And we want to preserve them as near-term carbon sinks. And near-term carbon sinks is anything that absorbs, absorbs more carbon from the atmosphere than it releases. And trees can capture this carbon and store it in their trunk, in their roots, and in their leaves for generations. And this causes a cooling effect on our atmosphere as it stops from more greenhouse gases, especially carbon, from entering the atmosphere. And that's the end of the presentation. We welcome any questions and anything of how Napa Schools for Climate Action can support you.
Thank you very much for coming again. I think you guys came about a few years ago and gave a great presentation, and so did Jim. So thank you for coming and reminding us of your message. So any questions from the council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you for your presentation. Is it Ms. Bensick and Koresh? Thank you. Thank you for coming out. I just want to say I, that it's very, I appreciate your report because it's very informative. I mean, I know something that, in terms of planning for cities, that we're, we're learning that when trees are cut down and we replace trees on any type of percentage or number, it doesn't really, it may be over the long, a long term creates, creates more trees in a community, but is counterproductive for the climate crisis. So I appreciate your emphasis on that point. So I just want to encourage you to keep going. And, and our community, this council, supports you. So I like your motto. So at some point in the fall or something, that if you want to have a countywide summit, then please contact our community Parks and Rec Director, because I'm sure the town would be happy to sponsor in Yountville an event central for the whole valley. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember McKee Cant?
Thank you. And Allison and Liliana, great job today in the fact that you were able to work with both American Canyon and Calistoga, our gateway cities to the valley, if you will, to have them agree not to expand upon gas stations is huge. So that makes me really proud of your work. And it gives me a sense of the bright future that we have ahead in the United States because of students like you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public? Oh, Councilmember Reeves?
I just wanted to add a little bit more as Councilmember Knight mentioned that we need to look at our tree ordinance. I think we should also look at the possibility of this ordinance to prevent more fossil fuel stations in, in Yountville just as solidarity, if nothing else, with your, your mission and our future. But also, because if there is pressure, there's always a possibility. So I think you're asking for something that we should be doing. So I think the council should take this up.
Yes, Councilmember Tripp?
Yes, I wanted to thank you both for your really helpful presentation. And I know I had not focused, we all know trees are positive, but had not really focused on the sink concept. So that's very helpful. And I agree that we should both look at the tree ordinance and consider putting on the agenda a cessation of more gas stations, not necessarily stopping any improvements for the existing gas station. But I think that would be a good thing for the council to put on the agenda. And, you know, it's a really dismal thing to think about climate change and to experience it. And the only positive thing I can think of is the fact that young people like you have taken this to a crisis, made it clear it's a crisis, and that our generation needs to respond on your behalf. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
So do we have any public comment that we received by email?
We received one public comment, Mayor. Dear Mayor Moller and Yountville Town Council Members, I'm not sure whether you allow public comment for presentations, but I wanted to reach out this morning and thank you for receiving the presentation of Napa Schools for Climate Action and to encourage, encourage your strong consideration of the recommendations in the areas of gas station development and tree protection. As the parent of a Napa teen who's been involved in climate advocacy since my son was nine, and I began to understand the full extent of the climate emergency, I can't tell you how impressed I am with the passion and dedication of Liliana Koresh and Allison Bensick in asking elected leaders throughout the valley to do all they can to help ensure that today's youth have the chance at a livable future. Thank you for inviting Liliana and Allison to present. It's so important that we listen now and do all we can to make a difference. As a parent, I view the smart climate policy choices we make, we adults make in 2023 as absolutely essential in building a foundation for our climate-wise protections, developments, and lifestyle choices that we must swiftly bring alive in order to effectively address this crisis and give our children real hope within this decade. Thank you for your time and consideration on these important climate matters. Being a world-renowned region, I do believe that our valley has the opportunity to lead on climate change in a way that will have an impact far beyond our jurisdictions. Sincerely, Lori Stelling.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment from the audience? Yes, Jim, please come up, state your name for us.
Thank you, Mayor Moller and council members. It's nice to be here. My name is Jim Wilson. I live in Napa. My children all went through the Napa Valley Unified School District, graduating from Vintage High School. I don't know where to begin. I wish I could respond to each of you. I think I'll just go with you, Councilmember Tripp. It is our responsibility, isn't it? And when we hear words like crisis and emergency, and we hear things like now and livable future, you know, what are we talking about? And we get numb to those things. I read a lot, a lot about this. I read it night and day. And there's two things we're talking about. First of all, it's the poison here in our room. 420 ppm CO2, unheard of, right? I mean, for millions of years, this doesn't happen. And so it's a spike. Our job is to make it just a blip. And we do that by reducing our emissions radically to zero, basically, right? Or near zero. And that's where the negative emissions of our plant communities comes in, forests in particular, to help us to get to zero. Job one, reduction. Then we're over, right? No. Because we're still stuck with whatever we have, right? And we got to get it back down to where we need it, which is 300 ppm, which is where my grandson wants it. And he deserves it. And these children deserve it. And it's their right to have it back down to 300, right? So how are we going to go from 420 today, or say 450, or 460, or 470, the way Paris would have it, right? Net zero by mid-century to 300. And we do that with the next phase, or I would say the concurrent phase, which is restoration. So we got to be doing everything we can with our plant communities, terrestrial plant communities, marine plant communities, okay? Anything that captures carbon through photosynthesis, for example, then sequesters it, and then holds it out of the atmosphere is what we need to do. So this I brought you because we tend to talk about concentrations of carbon dioxide. For example, this is about impacts. This is from last year's Scientific American February issue. This is the one-page graphic they put out. I left this with you. Thank you. Because it shows impacts by generation. And if you were born today, like my grandson is, okay? 20 years ago, these students, perhaps 40 years ago, 60 years ago, 80 years ago, these are the numbers of severe climate-related events that you'll be faced with as in your lifetimes. And so, for example, just for heat waves. If you were born 60 years ago, you have maybe five times the number of events. Saying nothing of severity or length, okay? And these children are facing 35 times the number of heat waves. This is why we call it an intergenerational justice issue. And I want to thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. And our next presentation today is a presentation from MCE. Probably need to move that microphone down a little bit. There you go.
Good afternoon, council members and mayor. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Dave Gardy, the Community Development Manager with MCE, your local renewable electricity provider. I was here earlier this year, and my intent this afternoon is to give you better insight into your community and take steps to strengthen our relationship so that you can achieve the sustainability goals so well outlined by the students. Next slide. So to jump, oh, I'm sorry. As a reminder, MCE offers a sustainable choice by supplying the grid with more energy from clean and local renewable energy sources. PG&E still addresses service outages, maintains the grid, and send you your monthly bills, which includes MCE's generation service in place of PG&E generation purchasing. And the end result means that you don't have to make any changes to receive more renewable energy. Next slide. So MCE is the electricity purchaser for Napa County and all its cities, including Yountville, as well as for the counties of Marin, Solano, and Contra Costa. MCE offers a sustainable choice by supplying the grid with more energy from clean and local renewable power sources. And you are also governed by a board made up power sources. And you are also governed by a board made up of elected officials throughout the counties. As you can see, our directors, Painter and Gregory on the lower right there. Having this board means more local control over the programs and purchasing that MCE is, is in charge of, and gives you more insight into making these programs better. Next So your community is already taking great climate action. MCE, or being, being a member of MCE, means that your, your dollars that you pay for, for your electricity is going to renewable sources. And then that means that you're eliminating greenhouse gases going into the air. As you can see, that MCE is very popular in Yountville. We have almost 92% of the residents and businesses participating. They do have a choice if they wanted to go back to PG&E. 5.5% of all the customers in Yountville are participating in our 100% renewable service called Deep Green, which means that we buy 100% of that equivalent of power from only renewable sources. And the town itself opted to have all of its accounts go deep green in 2020. So you guys are definitely already taking great steps. Next slide. So because we have a locally elected board, and we can work on these programs designed to meet your needs, we are flexible and, and can take input to make these programs better. Some of the programs that you've already been involved in include our electric vehicle charging rebate. So there's 26 ports that are either installed or in progress through our rebate program. And just by being part of MCE, there's been 3,740 metric tons of greenhouse gas that have been diverted. In addition to the programs that we offer, we also try to make deep connections to the communities that we serve. So we sponsor organizations like the Farm Worker Foundation, where I, I was lucky enough to attend and speak with farm workers about climate action, including mitigation. It was a really great event. And we're also members of the Local Chamber of Commerce. But we want to strengthen that relationship. And so I'm hoping to work with you in the coming year to, to make that a deeper and more meaningful relationship. We can work with you to be almost an extension of your, your own resources by providing facilitation on any sustainability action planning, so climate action planning, transportation action planning, that kind of thing. When I spoke with a couple of the councilmembers recently, they mentioned a community sustainability workshop. We do have rebates that average residents and businesses can take advantage of. So we'd really love to help get the word out there. So we're open to, you know, different ideas that you may have on, on ways we can work together. But please look to us as a resource as you put together your, your climate action plans. Next slide. So just a clarification on what MCE is and what we're not. We don't set rates for electric delivery or the natural gas side of your bill. These rates are typically set once a year, and this done by the board itself. So your local representation has a say in that. Next slide. So we know that energy costs is a big burden for a lot of families and businesses, and we do try to address that through our programs. So I'd be happy to talk to you more about how we can expand access to these bill savings programs. Next And here, I just wanted to show you our commitment to providing that, more of that energy from local sources. So we have, we have a program that will buy electricity from a developer. And that, what that does is it shows the market, hey, there's, there's a floor for the, the rates that they're going to get. And because of that, renewable energy developers are able to confidently develop these projects. And we, we try to look for ones that are more local. So you can see all the local ones we've, where we buy our energy from, and the different types of energy sources that you see there. Next slide. So as I mentioned before, we have lots of types of programs, including commercial energy efficiency programs, transportation electrification programs. Our electric car charging rebate is 35, up to $3,500 per port, which can pay about 40% for a Level 2 charger. We are also involved in green, green collar job training. So we, we have funding for that as well. And if you are interested in any of our programs, I would highly recommend you reach out and be happy to sit down with you and explain in great detail all those programs. Next slide. So I just wanted to give you a snapshot of some of our agency-wide statistics, including the $214 million in community investments, right? And that, that includes those rebate programs, community sponsorships, those kinds of things. Next slide. So thank you again so much for this opportunity to present today. I'd like to open, open it up for any questions you may have. And, and as a request, something that we do with other cities is we do usually have a staff liaison that we work with. And, you know, we meet sometimes monthly, sometimes quarterly, maybe even just once a year. But having that staff liaison really helps us to be able to get information out, including information on flex alerts, right? Where we, we know where these heatwaves are coming, and having the ability to reach out to the public and let them know, hey, heatwave's coming, let's, let's all lower our usage between four and nine. That's really important, as well as grant programs that we have coming up, and sponsorships, things like that, ways that we can coordinate. And so we would really appreciate if that's something that'd be possible. So thank you so much. And please let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll see if the rest of the council has any questions, and then we'll go from there. Councilmember Tripp.
Thank you for the presentation. I was just interested on the charging stations, the 26. That, that must be some individual homes, correct? Or are those actually located throughout the city or the town?
Yeah, they're, they're, and just to be clear, they're, a lot of that's just in development. But, but our, our charging station rebate is for, is for commercial properties and for multifamily properties. We don't, at this point, have a rebate for, for zinc family homes.
Okay. Because, and I, we are getting a new town manager in July. And so hopefully we could appoint an, or ask that we have a liaison. Because I would really think a community event around sustainability, but really what's available, because there's so many different programs available through MCE, and then through the Air Quality Management District, and the federal tax rebates available to make some of these energy efficient improvements a whole lot cheaper. And I've also been a proponent of perhaps the town considering taking a look at reducing or waiving some of the permit fees on some of these simple improvements. And especially now that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is coming forward with rules that will really encourage people to leave gas-powered furnaces and water heaters in the next several years. I think it's just really an opportune time. And the 2023, I forget the name of it, tax, some act, the one, but gave some really significant federal rebates as well. So anyway, I, I think it's so hard to figure all that out. It would be really helpful if, as a town, we could sponsor some sort of fair that would help people get through that whole process and realize that they, there is a good amount of funding that would help make those changes. So thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for bringing that up. I am currently, right now, in the middle of changing out my gas stove to an induction stove. So I'm really excited to, to get the rebate myself. But it is confusing out there. There's a lot of different rebates coming from a lot of different sources. And beyond just the resources that we can provide, we are more than happy to help you discover the, the other federal, state, local resources that are out there, as well as understanding the, the regulations that are coming. For instance, the, the ruling recently by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District that will end the sale of gas appliances, starting phasing in 2027, which is pretty close. So we all need to get ready for it, and we're, we need to work together.
Yeah, just not, just so that I don't create any, and you could correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think they're taking our gas stoves yet.
Not yet.
I think, I know that causes some people a lot of consternation. And, and I'm not making a statement one way or another, but I think they're focused on furnaces and water heaters, if I'm correct.
Absolutely. You know, I, I won't speak too much to the gas stove thing. That's on my own personal choice.
Yeah.
But we know that the items that use the most, it's really like your water heater that's on all the time, right? And your furnace, which is on half the year, right? So those are the two big ones where there's a, a clear need, and there's a good technology that can, you can use to retrofit in your home. Especially, you know, the one I would consider for your own home, most convenient is the water heater, because those tend to give out every 10 years or so. And the new ones that are, have been coming out, these heat pump water heaters are very efficient. I, I installed one in my home. It works great, plenty of hot water. And, you know, it has the same footprint as a typical water heater. And with all the rebate money that's out there, it, it didn't cost me anymore.
Any other council questions, comments? Councilmember Reeves?
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Tripp's comments on the need for education in the community, because I think that's, it's number one for getting some movement and activity happening with our residents. And I think you mentioned the 5.5% participation in Deep Green from our residents. And I feel like if, if there were a presentation by the young people who just gave us a presentation in front of our residents to talk about what the consequences are for, for us, but also for the next generation, if we don't do more soul-searching about how we live our lives right now, that I think, because people aren't really aware, or haven't heard, or haven't thought about it, in the way that it, it affects everyone else, I think we, I would love to see us work with workshops with you and other information providers for more sustainable results for our community. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember McKee Kent.
Thank you. So I, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but you said that you have roughly 1,000 customers here in Yountville. How many of those are businesses?
Oh, you know, I'm sorry. I apologize. Don't know off the top of my head. But it's, it's best, you know, is residential. But then, yeah, when we say accounts, you know, a lot of times I'll think, oh, just residential. But really, it is, it's our businesses. And, you know, what I would honestly want to consider is, how can we connect with our businesses? Because a lot of our programs are aimed at helping businesses lower their utility costs. So we work with wineries. We work with the agricultural community to figure out, where are the efficiency gaps? We actually have a program that will send energy efficiency engineers to your site and do walkthroughs of your site. And we have lots of wineries that participate in this program. And so, you know, it's really important to, to consider our larger businesses. They, they have high utility costs, but then that means they can also be a big part of the solution.
Right. Well, I'm also thinking of the resorts here in town.
Sure.
You're a chamber member. Have you made any headway with meeting principals and?
We could always do better. I, I, you know, I think we, we have a business development team, and they are always, you know, they're out in the community. We were at the, it was the Napa Rise event that happened earlier this year. We were, we were there, and we, you know, we spoke. We're always trying to find those opportunities. So any, any ways you think we can connect better with our local business community?
Yeah, that would be important. And also, there are two communities here, at least one, Rancho de Napa is master metered. So if it's on a PG&E map for an outage, it shows as one outage, but it's actually 200-plus homes.
Yeah.
So I guess it's a matter of talking to the managers there and in Bella Vista to find out if they have opt, they simply opt in to, through their PG&E bill?
So if they have not opted out, they are probably already members of MCE.
So you have to opt out?
You have to opt out. That's correct. Yes. We have some opt-in, opt-out, right? So you have the opting out to go back to PG&E, and you can opt up for 100% renewable service. Yeah. And, and just again, to reiterate that, we all have the power during these heatwaves to make a difference. And sometimes it's a little inconvenient, but the, the power of, of a, a community like that to, you know, maybe set the thermostat slightly higher during these heatwaves can really help the grid from, from that strain.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I look forward to helping you with the business development. And certainly, if we're going to do a community workshop, we could do some breakout specifically for businesses.
Absolutely.
So thank you very, very much for coming. Greatly appreciate your time and talking to us.
Thank you so much. Have a nice afternoon.
And our next presentation is Kate Miller is here from Napa Valley Transportation Authority. She's going to talk to us a little bit about our local trolley.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me today. Next slide. I just want to tell, I know you don't need to know this, but sometimes people sitting in the audience need to be reminded that the Napa Valley Transportation Authority is a joint powers authority with members from each of the city, town, and county jurisdictions in, in Napa Valley. We oversee the Hafcyn Sales Tax for local streets and roads maintenance. We prepare all the countywide transportation planning. So the countywide plan, the active transportation plan, the Vision Zero Plan. We program funds, which means we distribute federal and state highway funds to the local jurisdictions. And in, in addition, obviously, we manage the Vine Transit System and its ancillary services, shuttle services in Yountville, as well as St. Helena, Calistoga, and American Canyon. And we also operate the Vine Go System. And we also have a travel demand program, which allows people to get resources to travel outside of a single occupancy vehicle-type community system. Next slide. So just real quickly, this is the operating area where the B Line currently operates in the town of Yountville. As you all know, you can use the Ride the Vine app to call the service to schedule a ride, or you can call on your phone, or you can hail the vehicle when you see it coming down the street. Next slide. The other services that we provide here in Yountville is Route 10, which is the Up Valley Connector. It goes from Calistoga to the Redwood Park and Ride, and then connects with the Route 11 to get further down valley, including all the way to Vallejo, both Kaiser Hospital, as well as the ferry system, and connect with all the other transit services in Napa. I mentioned already that we provide Vine Go service here, which is for people with disabilities that are qualified and are otherwise not able to use a fixed route bus. Next slide. So just a little brief history about how the town of Yountville received the trolley in the first place. It used to be, operated in the city of Napa. The Downtown Napa Association funded it. When that funded, funding ended, we, and this predates me, we approached the town of Yountville and asked if you wanted to have the trolley as your vehicle. In 2012, NBTA replaced the old trolley with a new similar vehicle. But in recent years, there's two things that happened. NBTA, like all the other public transit systems in the state of California, are required to transition their fossil fuel fleets to electric, or some other zero emission technology. And so we've been buying electric buses. And when it came to replace this vehicle, next slide, we decided to go with the electric vehicle. And here are some of, I just wanted to outline some of the reasons why we retired the trolley. It was in service about as much as it was out of service because of the various mechanical problems that we had with it. Next slide. The vehicles also was very difficult to board and alight. And so anybody with physical limitations often struggled, and there was some tripping hazards. As I mentioned earlier, there's mechanical problems that often focused on the lift, which was always out of service, or frequently out of service. And again, we are transitioning our fleet to zero emission. And right now, there are no trolley-type vehicles that would meet the Federal Transit Administration requirements associated with that. Next slide. Next slide. When we presented to the council options on how they wanted the vehicle branded, we provided four options. And this was really focused on pollinators and other species that might be protected that are in the valley. And so you can see we have the bee, we have an owl, we have a hawk, and we have a butterfly. Next slide. So on February 2nd, 2021, I wasn't here, but I believe Rebecca was here. And my apologies for not introducing Rebecca. Rebecca is the transit manager at NBTA, and I'm the executive director. So the town council unanimously supported the acquisition of the B bus. And in September 20th, 2022, we launched the vehicle. And you'll see a photo there of the ribbon cutting. Next slide. So the total cost of the bus, including the wrap, is about $600,000. And the town contributed $10,000 to that acquisition. I would say now, first of all, we can't buy that type of bus anymore because it's a Chinese-owned company, although there is pending federal legislation that would allow us to go back and buy these vehicles using federal funds. It is manufactured here in the United States, so it actually, in theory, meets the Buy America provision. But because of a piece of legislation that got through, it's challenging and complicated, nothing to do with transportation. But hopefully, we'll be able to buy them again because we think they're good little buses. The annual operating cost of, and I will also say that that bus probably now is more around $800,000. The annual operating cost for the B is about $400,000 a year. And 90% of that is funded by NBTA, and the balance is funded by the town of Yountville. Next slide. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for coming and talking to us about the B. Do you have any questions? Councilmember Reeves?
I do. Thank you very much for that. We have had some discussion in our community about the appropriateness of the bus for our community. And I think that's why we wanted you to come and bring some information about the history of how we got the bus. But I think a little bit like when you get a picture from a magazine and you take it to your hair cutter and you say, this is what I want. And they do it for you, and it, of course, doesn't look right on you because it's somebody else's picture, right? So anyway, I think there's a little bit of, gee, that wasn't what I was expecting kind of feeling from the community. So I had a couple of questions about, and I don't know if, if you've heard these questions, but some people think that this bus is too big for our community. But it is my impression that it's about the same length as the old trolley.
Yeah, it's about 10 inches longer. It is actually shorter. And it's, I'm not sure really if it's wider. The width that we're aware of, it actually includes a larger mirrors on either side of the bus, so it's probably comparable.
Right. So it's basically the same size as the old trolley. It just has a different look. The biggest item is that it's electric, and that's a huge plus for the community. And I think that, in a way, we, we would like everyone to like that part of the bus because it's what we need as a community. So one of the things that some people dislike about it is the wrap and the fact that you can't see in and out of the bus.
You can see out of the bus.
Right. At night, a lot of people say it's difficult to see out. But anyway, I'm just, I'm wondering if there is a possibility of taking the wrap off the windows only and whether or not there's a way to Yountville up the bus a little bit, which means nowhere on the outside does it appear to say Free Yountville Trolley. Just get on, have a great ride through town. We go through the town limits, and that's it. More information on the bus so that people who are visitors and people who live here would know that it's appropriate for them to flag it down. And also, maybe at the bus stops, some other little poster that talks about the Yountville Shuttle. Because it just seems like it looks so much like an urban bus that nobody knows what you're supposed to do with it.
Well, so the head sign says, Yountville Free Trolley, on the bus all the time. And I suppose we could maybe add something to the back of the bus. And then I believe the shelters do have information about the bus on, in the shelter. But maybe we can make it larger.
Councilmember McKee Cant.
I echo the comments that Councilmember Reeves said the branding is, is minimal. And in looking at the, the trolley that you branded and rebranded specifically for us, or maybe that the picture that in your presentation was the 2012 one. I mean, it, it had the character of Yountville on it. Of course, we can't say trolley for the bus, but to, to make it feel a little more welcoming to tourists that maybe didn't catch the sign in the front window as it's going by because it is quiet when it comes up on you, I think that could make it more friendly. You know, art is a matter of taste, and color is a matter of taste. And there are people here that feel like it's not charming. And then there are others that say it's a ray of sunshine coming up the street. So function is the most important part. And, and I feel like our community is very lucky to have the bus with its safety, to be able to, to access for older people that can't get onto a trolley and pull themselves up. And also the fact that it has space inside for wheelchairs. I think that, you know, those points need to be highlighted. This is a trolley that was designed specifically for our town. So branding, I think, could help people, our tourists realize that it's there and make our locals feel a little more calm about it, hopefully. Thank you, Kate.
So just a question. We're still putting rack cards in all the hotels about this bus as we did with the trolley. Is that?
What you have kind of in the map that she showed there, it has kind of a branding on the front and back of it that has the Yountville Bee, and we distribute that, and we distribute together.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Councilmember Tripp.
And there are actually, I think, when I volunteer in the visitor center, some rack cards. And visitors love the bee or the trolley. So my question is, because we have gotten a lot of feedback on aesthetics. It's interesting when you're on the council, what catches people's attention. How, so my thought immediately is, how often do those wraps get replaced? Just as a matter that they would need to be replaced? Because that's always an opportunity to think about aesthetics.
They usually last a useful life of the vehicle, which is 12 years. Yeah.
So those are really embedded in the vehicle. It's not a.
I mean, it's possible to, to change it, but it's not something that I think NBTA would fund. Yeah.
Yeah. And just, do you have any guess at what it would cost to change it?
I think it would probably be about $50,000 total. We'd have to do a lot of the rebranding because we're doing a lot of branding about the B bus. And then the actual work and design, you know, that would probably be about $40,000.
Yeah. And understandably, that is something the town should consider bearing, of course. So those are my questions.
Yeah. I mean, I just also think that there's, on top of that question is just the general branding of our electric buses. Whether wanted, NBTA wants to have a consistent look around the valley of what, what they're supposed to represent and to promote the electric vehicles everywhere we go. So that would have to be probably a larger discussion at my board meeting as well.
So even though this particular bus just stays within Yountville, the thought is it's important that all of the buses be branded similarly?
That was the approach when we talked to the board. And also, that while this bus is in Yountville now, it could be interlined with another service at some point. We don't know. Not likely, but that does happen. And when I say interline, just changing the bus out for different buses.
Oh, I see what you mean. So it could become a butterfly bus or a different bus?
Yeah, maybe at some point. I don't know. Yeah.
If you were to exchange them out, would, or there would be some change of usage or an opening to look at the aesthetics again, would you be able to kind of give Yountville a heads up about that so that we might have some input?
Yeah, sure. I think we always, when there's something to, I mean, we would not have done this bus this way if it hadn't been approved by the council.
No, no. And I didn't mean that, but I just meant, in general, if you were going to make a big change, you could let us know.
Sure. Absolutely. We would come up here. And I also have, you know, there's a little bit of a soft spot around these vehicles because we get so many compliments from everybody in the industry. We get compliments from everybody in the valley. So this is somewhat shocking that we're getting this kind of feedback that, that people in Yountville don't like the, the bus. And it's, I think, you know, it's a little hard on us. We really think the bus is pretty cute.
Okay. Well, and that's actually helpful to know that you get a lot of positive feedback. Because we only know what we know and what we hear. So.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know. I know the backstory has to do with a social media platform. I didn't, I don't have access to it. I don't know what was said. But I also had the copy of the article in the newspaper. And I, I think the genesis of this was that somebody was up at Domain Chandon and wanted to ride. And, and we don't, we don't serve Domain Chandon. So there might have been a misunderstanding. It might have made someone upset. Maybe that's where it started. I don't know. Yeah.
But, well, thank you for coming. I realize it's not, right, we're seeing a little piece of the picture. So thank you for giving us more information.
We are too, right? We're only seeing our piece of the picture as well.
Mayor, I have a comment. So maybe just to shed, or to bring a little lightness and, and like you said, the positivity. My youngest daughter nannies two, three-year-olds in town. And they're, they have no greater joy than to get on the Yountville B line. And if she could share the video she takes with, of them for their parents, then singing and enjoying just being on that bus is, is, it's just very enjoyable to watch how excited they are. So I understand, I, I think what's true is that there's a few people in town that are concerned about maybe the image or feel of the bus. And my general sense, like they talked to you, and we talked before the meeting, is that I think it's, if anything, the wrap that's on the bus that gives a larger massing for the bus, and it would be if there was visible, if there was windows and you were, you were able to see in. I know you can see out, but you can see in. But my best guess is that that wrap provides a purpose for an electric bus to provide, reduce heat gain and heat loss so that it doesn't take as much energy to run that bus because it's, it protects, you know, the glass and then windows. So I, maybe there's, you know, I, I just want to say that I think generally that I think the community is happy that we have an electric bus in the community. And hopefully, we'll get more use as we come out of COVID and get more participation. I mean, I know you go up to the Veterans Home and we'll see more use. I know my daughter's three-year-olds are definitely increasing your ridership in the last couple of months. So I think it's that challenge of that skin giving the impression it's larger than it really is. And maybe someday, there's, there may be an opportunity to preserve the theme of the bus and maybe open up some of the windows so the public generally has a sense that you, that it feels like it's more of a public transit bus. And, and maybe I look forward, maybe we could talk about that more about, and the, or the, or the council or our staff could talk about that. But thank you for your presentation. Our community, I think, enjoys that we have an alternative to a gas, to a gas vehicle in this town. And, you know, I appreciate all that you do for the community and for the valley. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And just quickly, personally, I hear from a lot of veterans. They're so, so much happier, you know, now especially that it's running up there with post-COVID. But being able to get on that with, you know, some of their heavy wheelchairs and having locks in place, you know, that, that just really didn't work for them at all before. And I, I hear a lot of very positive comments, so I'm going to give you those because, you know, social media people, they're hiding behind something. And one person goes on with something else. So personally, the comments I hear are, are really good. And, you know, back to, and again, thank you for letting our community know that this is, you know, a bus that was, you know, purchased through, you know, a lot of federal and state dollars, you know, by NBTA. And Yountville only has to pay a very small amount of that to have this tremendous free service. Some of the other communities north of us, they charge for that. We give it to our residents for free. I don't think they really fully realize that. So I would like to emphasize that. And, you know, it was just kind of fortuitous when the four choices kind of came by. The Yountville Council, and I remember this explicitly because I said it. When I saw the bee, well, you know, first I grew up, we raised bees. But it always reminded me of, you know, some younger students that came to the council. And they were always giving, you know, information to us with their Be Kind button. So immediately when I saw the bee, I thought of, you know, be kind. And I really thought our community would really adopt that. And from the people I've talked to, they really have. So, you know, sometimes it's just a matter of change. And, you know, I think this change is very positive and very good. And I certainly under, I've been on the bus several times. You can see out of the windows just fine. And, you know, having some, you know, some anti-glare that, you know, can let you look at. You can even take your sunglasses off and, and see just fine. So maybe it's just a matter of some people adapting a little more. I can almost predict, you know, once we get a new one and it doesn't look like the bee, we might be having these same conversations. So sometimes it's just that. So thank you for everything you do on NBTA, and I'll see you at the meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Now we have, this would be a good time if anybody would like to exit stage right. There you go. All right. Now, we have no public hearings tonight. And administrative items, we have one item. And this is considering adoption of a resolution to amend Town Council Benefit Plan for elected officials. So can we get a staff report, please? Looks like Carrie's going to help us with this today.
Yes, happy to, Mayor and council members. This is a follow-up from your last meeting where we discussed this. You'll recall the state law that authorizes the town to provide health and welfare benefits to council members. The requirements being that the benefits provided to you all are also provided to your non-safety employees, which here in Yountville are your employees generally. Town employees receive what's called an in-lie payment if they do not participate in the insurance program, the health insurance program the town offers. State law requires that that be a reimbursement for you all instead of in-lie. So the council at the last meeting specifically asked for six different items to be added to your 2019 policy. Those are listed in the staff report. We have made revisions for all of those except for the cell phone reimbursement. As you know, there's a separate policy on technology stipend. Our recommendation is to include it in that policy, should you like to do that, instead of including it in this one, so it's included within the same one. It's not really related to these types of health and welfare benefits or the other reimbursements that are specific to you all since that technology stipend is also provided to other employees within the town. We do have some proposed revisions to the resolution that's in front of you. You might have noticed that in this one section, there's a zero missing from your total contribution allowed throughout the year. So we would ask that you add a zero to that, and I'll give you the paragraph for that. And then to the resolution to make it effective on July 1 of this year. We don't have an effective date, but in talking with staff, we are recommending that it be effective at the beginning of the fiscal year since that is when you've budgeted for these amounts to take effect. And that the reimbursements be applicable per fiscal year, which is the second addition to what's before you today. So I will give you those code sections as well. Before I do that, and before you decide on whether or not to adopt that, and I provide the amendments that staff is proposing, do you have any questions? Or is there anything else I can provide on this?
Thank you very much for that. Questions from the council? None to my left. Councilmember Tripp.
Just so I, and I, I think I have this, but just so that it's clear and we all hear it because, as you know.
it, because as you know, we can't be discussing things individually with other members too much. On the cell phone, we, we do, or we don't need to provide a bill every month. Is that correct? Unlike the medical insurance. I just want to be sure I had that right.
It does need to be based on some proof that the expense has been incurred.
Okay.
So whether that's a bill or some other proof, I think it would typically be a bill.
Okay.
And, and that's in your current policy, not being proposed to be changed in the version that's before you this afternoon. That provision is a carryover from your existing policy and would remain unchanged.
Okay.
But it requires reimbursement upon proof of, let me give you the actual language. Expenses will be documented, itemized, and submitted to the town for reimbursement, is the current language. So some sort of proof that those costs were incurred.
And the ceiling, or, and this makes good sense, but just again, so I have it clear, is what's available to town employees, which is the $80, correct? So let's say I had an incredibly expensive cell plan, which I don't, but if I did, $80 would be the maximum. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, thank you. I, well, just, just one comment that I want to always reiterate that, that I think what we're bringing forward for council is, is, and it's supported by state law, that we are not receiving any benefit from the town that's more than any benefit received by an employee of the town. And I just want to reiterate that because we do, so it's, it's a policy that matches other benefits by other town employees, and there, and that's what we are adding to this council because we do spend as, I mean, there are some benefits, like not being able to join, I guess, be a full-time pers or retirement or benefits after we leave the council, which probably is fair to, it's also important to, to recognize the fact that we do not receive any of these benefits after leaving council, unlike maybe that occurs sometimes with, like the board of supervisors and others. But I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And before we kind of get to your list of missing zeros, et cetera, I just, you know, I, I think that I am probably speaking for the whole council, but feel free to tell me if I'm not, that the real reason that we revise this policy is, I think it's, you know, our hope, that we're a pretty small community. We all know that this is a, a job that takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, and there will always be a council because of our form of government here in the town. So we're hoping that this might go just a small way to maybe encourage, you know, future council members that, yeah, you're going to have to give up a lot, and you're not going to earn any money, you're probably going to have to not be able to work a full-time job, but here is some, something that, you know, can maybe help, you know, sit in one, sit in one of our seats someday. So just with, with that background, without, do we have any public comment on this item? See no public comment coming up? So maybe you could give us the list, this is in the Exhibit A that you're going to point out?
Yes, Exhibit A, and then also one minor change to the resolution as well.
Okay.
So we'll start with Exhibit A. The word "year" is mentioned in two separate paragraphs under 2B. It's mentioned for "vision," which is at the top of the second page, and it's mentioned in the, so the middle of the second page, in the same paragraph that talks about the maximum reimbursement to council members. Staff is recommending that the word "fiscal" be added before both of those. In that same paragraph in the middle of Page 2, there's a zero missing from your annual reimbursement amount. So we would suggest that we add that back in.
Which section is that in?
It's 2B, but it's on the second page of the policy.
Okay. And, okay.
And then in the resolution itself, there are two paragraphs following what the council is resolving. Second one is regarding the effective date. Staff is recommending that be changed to the resolution is hereby adopted and becomes effective and in full force on July 1, 2023.
So if we ask for a, any final discussion and a motion, can we just recite what you gave us, approving this resolution with the changes suggested by the attorney? Would that be sufficient?
Yes, as long as those are cleared to all the council members, yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll bring it back to council for final decision or discussion, or if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the resolution with Exhibit A? I entertain that as well.
Mayor, can I ask that everybody refresh their screens before we move into that, just so I can see the connectivity? I discovered a screen here where I can actually see if somebody is disconnected or connected.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
And I'm happy to move this resolution, but just to clarify, in the resolution, it taught, and just for review, it's in Item 1, now therefore, after that, it's as attached as Exhibit A to this resolution. So generally, in terms of when we approve resolutions, the town attorney, we, we don't have to include that exhibit more descriptively in the resolution. We can, we just refer to an exhibit, and that's okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mayor, I'm ready to move approval if there's no other questions.
And we have a motion, any-
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, and hopefully everybody has refreshed their screen and everything's going to work. We'll find out soon.
It did not display, but it passed unanimously.
All right, thank you very much, council. There was, thank you for doing that. So that did pass unanimously. Thank you very much. And next, staff informational reports, we have none. And council meeting reports, announcements, and agenda items, let's see, number one is flood control. I went to flood control on June the 13th, and just like in the town, we are working on our flood control budget. So just kind of for council information, we basically at flood control have a budget more than twice the size of Yountville's, it's about $22 million. And this primarily comes from Measure A, which was passed in 1998, I believe. It's a half-cent sales tax that goes for flood control, storm water, a lot of stuff throughout the valley. So very active work on lots of projects. And we will, we gave a preliminary approval of the proposed budget, and just like we do with council, we will be, it's going out for public comment, and we will be approving that, I believe, on our meeting next week on the 27th. So that is NVTA, Eric and I are meeting tomorrow.
May I ask a question on the flood control, mayor?
Yes.
So do, in the past, have they ever proposed any specific projects in terms of Hopper Creek and cleaning out? Is there any responsibility or authority for, by, there must be, by the flood control to clean up Hopper Creek, since I'm very aware of that, since I live right on it, and there's always a lot of vegetation and silt and stuff in there?
So I'll turn that over to staff about cleaning out the creek is kind of a hot button.
But I mostly want to know if the flood district has any responsibility.
Yes, the flood district has the, we partner with the flood district. They don't have a financial responsibility, but they are the holders of the annual maintenance permit on all of the waterways in the Napa Valley. So flood district has the annual permits from Fish and Game that allows them to enter and perform the work on behalf of the local municipalities.
So when you say they, I'm just curious that they don't, given the size of the budget, and I think it's on my property tax bill, I'm pretty sure the flood district is an item.
No, it's a, it's a sales tax, a half-cent sales tax that was approved by the voters in 1998. So it's a sales tax.
It's completely sales tax. So I'm just curious why Yountville wouldn't get funding for flood control?
We fund ourselves, we, you know, the budget that we just approved, we, there's line items in there to perform our annual creek maintenance. And the county invoices us for the work that they do, and we reimburse them.
Okay. So is, so mayor, in terms of the budget for the flood control district, does it ever include specific projects that Yountville would be eligible for, or grants, or, I mean, 20, did you say $22 million? That, that's a fair amount of money. So how does the budget work?
They also, yeah, those are pretty much called appropriations about, so appropriations is like what we kind of think about as income. And then the expenses, there's a, there's a whole list of projects right now. A lot of work's going into a couple of the flood walls down in Napa, redoing the OXPO, we hear a lot about that, storm water mitigation. There's, there's a lot of stuff in the, because they get some of our sales tax to help with that, that, you know, yes, and that's why there's board members, and I, I represent Yountville on that board in terms of the, we have staff, just like this, and we have staff and, you know, different projects that come up. But, you know, there's a pretty long-term work plan because some of these big flood mitigation projects that are going on, once we, if we can take care of stuff downstream, it really prevents, you know, problems occurring upstream, i.e. Yountville. So, yes, it's not just, we just don't give our money away and get nothing for it.
Well, I'm talking about, the town doesn't seem to get a lot for it. That, that's all I was asking, because we do have flooding issues, right? I mean, if you live at the, down in Oak Circle, it floods pretty regularly, at least this past year.
And that is our, that is our plan. That is our flood plan, is, and that's how the streets-
Is the flood?
Yes, it was, the streets were designed very wide, so when the development went in, we might have made different decisions now, that that is how things were going to, the water was going to flow out to the vineyards instead of putting pipes in. So that was a, a previous development decision approved by the council. Yes, John?
I was just going to say that the engineer in me says it's working as, as it was designed. It's not flooding, it, it conjures up images that it's not a controlled thing, but it is a very controlled thing. And in the last season, it's a good example of it because there was no local private property damage. The water stayed where it was supposed to in the street in a flood conveyance to its destination.
But I think, mayor, it's also fair that, I mean, over the last, what, 25 years or more, the town has improved the situation, the work done between Washington Park and the three-whe, three-wheer that diverted water that was running over Hopper at that bend and taking it quick, more quickly back to the, to the vineyards to the east, and then also generally maintaining Hopper, clearing the gravel that seems to settle between Mulberry and, and Oak Circle helps reduce that threat of flooding. So the mayor's right, the streets in our neighborhoods were designed the way they are, but I think we've improved on, we've reduced flooding significantly by our, the flood control work we've done in the town over the last 25 years or more, so.
And if I may, that was Measure A money that was slated to the town for those improvements, so.
Oh, so that came from this?
Yeah, the Measure A funds were used specifically for town improvements along Hopper Creek back in 2010-ish.
Yeah. So we did benefit, basically, from it. Okay. Thank you.
So now everyone will know even more. Next time the budget comes around, when we see Measure T funds, Measure A funds, exactly what those are, but yeah, there you go. And I'm just going to make sure with our town attorney, are we having a discussion here instead of me giving a meeting report?
Getting very close to that. So yes, I would keep it to your meeting report.
All right, thank you very much for that. Does anybody else have a?
I have one meeting report too.
Okay.
Well, we have NVTA tomorrow, and I did get a notice today that Climate Action Committee, the meeting was canceled in a week or so. But anyway, just before our ILG meeting tomorrow, there was a report, and I'm saying this because maybe the town attorney will help us in the future, there'll be a briefing, I'm going to try to come to the council chambers early between 9:30 and 10:00. CalCities is reporting on SB 584 by Senator Lamone, which threatens long-term ability of cities to fund essential services by imposing a statewide 15% tax on the occupancy of short-term rentals to fund labor force housing. Now, CalCities supports funding labor force housing, but they're concerned that this, this tax will affect, affect, and they use the word cripple, that many cities rely on local transient occupancy tax. So maybe the, I appreciate, we'd appreciate if the town attorney's office would keep us up to date on, on SB 584. So if we need to at some point write or, or send information, I think we'll hear about it. I think it's a pretty hot issue with CalCities, but it'd be, it will be good for us to stay up to date on, on that, on SB 584.
And I had an announcement too, when you get to that point.
Okay, any other council reports? None? Oh, Councilmember Reeves?
I attended the League of California North Bay Division meeting at, in American Canyon, the Watson Ranch project, and more specifically, the Lemos Point tour. And I have this little handout that's, that was from that. I think the biggest sort of brag from the town manager in American Canyon was that, that they have kind of switched the tables in affordable housing building, not only because they have used these modular units to create this three-story structure for affordable housing, but that they actually built that phase first rather than last, which is sort of the traditional way of doing it. And just touring that facility, it is quite nice, but my impression is that for Yountville, I think we have always been much more aware that we want affordable housing to be dispersed and melded into the community more. So while this is a very worthwhile project and a very amazing feat for American Canyon, I think it has a kind of a, a different version that Yountville might try to employ. So I just thought I'd bring that to the council.
Councilmember Trip, you had an announcement?
I had an announcement and a report. I attended, as a representative for Yountville, the Association of Bay Area Governments, which was pretty fascinating, supervisors and council members from all the counties surrounding the Bay Area. And the main point of it was to approve the annual budget, ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, combined with MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, I think about five years ago. So they have the same management structure. But there is, there were some, I guess, the bottom line is the ABAG dues, which I'm not sure how much Yountville pays exactly, will be going up about 10%, some of which reflects cost of living, which I think is in the contract, and some of them reflects what is basically a large structural deficit that ABAG has on account of pension liabilities and other post-employment benefit liabilities that, to the tune of, I think, around $3 million. And one of the options they'll be considering down the line is perhaps selling, they own a portion of the building that they're located in on Beale Street, perhaps selling their interest in the building to pay off the pension. The pension plan itself has been closed down because those employees no longer, they've all transferred over to the new entity. But anyway, that's the long and the short of that. And there was a very interesting presentation from Brookings Institution on regional planning. And the main point that I took away was, we have to think regionally, which really makes sense particularly for Napa Valley, that it's not just a matter of each town doing their own thing, but success really depends upon all of us joining together, which I think it seems as if Napa County does do that. So that was very interesting. So that was the end of that. And I did have one announcement- was the end of that. And I did have one announcement, and unfortunately, I did not bring the information, but Billy Hewitt reminded me that they are looking for folks to help vets on the Fourth of July who can push wheelchairs to volunteer for several hours. So I, if you email me, I can get you the exact information if you're able to do that, so that the vets could participate in the Fourth of July program. So that was the announcement. And then I did have a question about, and Gary can tell me if this is not appropriate, but it did occur to me when I was at A-BAG, when we attend those kind of meetings, we're representing the town of Yountville, as well as, say, any other board, like the Metropolitan, I mean, excuse me, the, the Transportation Authority. As a representative of the town, if there's a big issue coming up, do, are we intended to discuss it with the town and reach a decision so that we would vote what the town thinks, or is it what we as individuals think, or, do you sort of see what I'm saying, when we have a position on a board, we're there as part of the governance, but I'm not there to vote my opinion, I'm there to vote, well, that's my question, how would I know what the town thinks? I guess that's my question. And does it vary by organization?
Well, I'll, I'll respond briefly, and if we need to agendize this to have a broader discussion or discuss offline, I'm happy to do that as well. When you are appointed to those boards by this council, you are acting your capacity as a board member for that particular agency. You are, of course, acting on behalf of the town and as a representative from the town, but you are putting on a different hat when you're serving in that role than when you are as a council member. To the extent you take into consideration what the town or other council members want, you're certainly entitled to do that, and I know council members do.
So, so in general, it really is, comes down to, we're acting as a director of that particular organization, using our business judgment, or whatever the standard might be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And hopefully, I can go just a couple more sentences. It also, when you're on these boards, one of the first things I'd recommend after reaching out to staff to figure out, you know, what, what it's all about, take a look at their bylaws. Some bylaws are very, are different than other ones, and some, so some of the boards I sit on, when it actually says that by the appointment to that board, the bylaws say that, you know, you are the town, you, you're a representative for the town council, and they have delegated authority to you. Some don't say that, and they have different information. So I highly recommend looking at the bylaws, and it's almost on everybody's website, easy to find, and that provides a lot more information. Is that all correct?
Yes.
Ah, thank you, good. All right, any, anything else we missed? Councilmember Reeves?
Just one thing, yes, the Climate Action Committee was canceled on the 23rd, but there will be a special meeting on the 30th at 1:00 p.m. because of the, I guess, regrouping around the fact that the county did not receive a grant to create their climate action plan. So I think that will be the topic of that meeting.
And they're reapplying, I understand. All right. So with that, any future agenda item requests?
Mayor, I, I have one, thank you.
Councilmember Reeves, did you have one? No? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Very appropriate, it seemed, today with our climate crisis presentation, and then receiving also the, a letter from the resident Kimberly Cook, is that, and some actions that, that Ms. Cook's letter addressed, that I want to encourage council to agendize a discussion, and I think maybe most appropriately to do as soon as possible on our July 18th agenda, to receive a report from plant, from planning staff and about our, about the municipal code, Chapter 17.128, our tree preservation and management regulations, to discuss it and to maybe consider some, just, just a general conversation, and for me, primarily how we can help support staff fully, you know, use the regs and appropriately take action when there are requests for tree protection or tree removal. And so I think we've had enough activity in the community that I think it's appropriate for us to have this conversation. It may lead to more action after it, but it's not an appropriate discussion tonight. But I would ask the council for support to agendize most more, maybe sooner than later, and I, I think the July 18th agenda may be an appropriate time to, to talk about Chapter 17.
And so also, I would like to add a little bit for direction to staff on that. I think there's some misconception, it was many, many decades ago that we actually went around and tagged trees. You really can't hammer nails in them anymore, but, you know, the, maybe a little history, very short history, on how that happened, why it was really discontinued, and, you know, the, the, the new activities we put in place, and we can take a look at the ordinance and our, our plan then. But, so, I think that history's going to be needed for some people, too, that might remember that. So is council in agreement with that? Councilmember Reeves?
Yes, I would definitely support that. But I was also wondering, in the meantime, since we've had at least four large trees removed in the last month or so, it feels like, is there a way to have a moratorium until we look at these ordinances so that we don't lose more trees in the meantime?
I'll let our town attorney respond to that.
A moratorium is possible. It would be an ordinance adopted by this council by a four-fifths vote to do it. We'd need to bring it back at a future meeting to do that. So we would look for direction from you all to add that to an agenda, should you wish to do so.
John? Oh, you have nothing, okay. Councilmember Tripp? And remember, we're, we cannot, we can't discuss it.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to discuss anything. I'm going to give, but you can stop me if I do. In terms of direction, to kind of add to what Councilmember Reeves was saying, and also what the mayor was saying, I think the history would be interesting, an overview of what the ordinance provides. And then if staff has any thoughts or options, having heard and experienced at a closer range some of what's going on, to present any options of available remedies, restrictions, what other towns might be doing to protect trees. Options are really helpful, because we only know what we know. And so if that could be included as part of the staff report, I personally would find that very helpful. So that was my comment on that. And possibly, I would not, I would be willing to also include in the agenda item, just so that we could have the discussion appropriately, legally, the moratorium question. Gary could tell us if that could be included with the review of the tree ordinance, along with options and the history, whether that could be included, so that if we did decide to take action, we could. So that would be my question, comment and a question.
Yes. If, if the council would like, we can add it to the same agenda discussion.
Okay, so first, do we have three votes for? No.
For the, for the eventual adoption, you do, to place it on an agenda, you only need a majority.
Okay, so we've placed it on the agenda, we've, we've got, any further discussion?
I just want...
And remember, this is, do you have something new?
Yes, just that, and I appreciate the support from council and, and the suggestion from Councilmember Reeves about a moratorium. I thought about that, didn't bring it forward primarily because of timing. We will not have a meeting on July 4th, we will have a meeting on July 18th. So there really isn't any action we would be able to take until July 18th, but I thought a conversation with staff would be more appropriate. But we have the advantage of, at July 18th, we could request staff to bring something back for our August 4th meeting. We have a shorter time. So, I mean, there's an opportunity for that discussion at the meeting on the 18th, to bring something back, if we want to give direction to staff then, and I would be open for, to that, too. But it's just, I think it's more the fact that we will not meet again till July 18th, and there's some advantage that staff will have an opportunity to put together a report, and I look, and I do appreciate the fact that I think we're asking for staff recommendations and for a conversation, so we can help them apply the town regulations, and, and to do it in a way that's, that, you know, meets our goals, our climate action, climate crisis goals, and just generally to, and so I appreciate the opportunity to have that conversation with staff first, and then an opportunity then on the 18th, maybe, if the council had that support to take more action. Thank you.
So does staff have direction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, with that, let's move on to, we have no closed session. Councilmember Reeves?
One other thing to agendize, which is the restriction on any new gas stations and any expansion of gas stations. Is there any support on the council to take that discussion further?
I support it.
Is that something that we could, could that also go on our next agenda?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, yes, we have, seems like we have support for that.
I support that. Maybe we get a look at the resolutions from the other communities, CalStog and American Canyon, but I, I mean, I think it's important for us to join them if we, if, if there's the support from the council.
We need at least one gas station. Okay, any, anything else? No, with that?
Wait, Madam Mayor, sorry for interrupting. So for the tree item on the next meeting?
Yes.
I'm bringing forward a discussion about the municipal code, a report and discussion about the, the specific section of the municipal code, plus a heritage tree survey, plus a discussion about a potential moratorium, and then plus staff options and ideas, with the idea that if, at the July 18th meeting, if council wanted to direct a moratorium, we would bring it back to the August meeting. Is that correct?
Correct. Unless, what, what provisions do we have for an emergency? Is this an emergency?
The reason why we're asking is that I do think there was some disagreement amongst you on whether or not we'd be bringing back that moratorium ordinance at the July 18th meeting or not. So we just want to be clear if it's happening at that meeting, or if it's only a discussion at that meeting.
So what, what I would like to do is clarify what, what my thought is, is if we can't come to an agreement on an ordinance or a set of rules or whatever at the July 18th meeting, that we have a moratorium ready to go, so that if it extends past that first meeting in August, then we will, that moratorium will go into effect on the 18th, rather than wait around, because it's, it's like closing the barn door after the horse is out if we don't make sure that, that nothing happens in the meantime while we're thinking about the other stuff.
Is staff clear on that?
Yeah, so then, to do that, we will need to draft an ordinance and agendize it for an approval of a moratorium at the July 18th meeting, which is different than what the Vice Mayor had suggested. So if that's the council direction, we will do that.
So Mayor, I can support that. I mean, I, I think, I, I look forward to our conversation with staff, but to have that available, if that's the will of the majority of the council, I can support having that ordinance prepared for that meeting.
Okay, so you've got a majority, so that's a yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I am going to announce that we have no closed session, and move on to adjournment to get a motion and a second for adjournment. We'll be adjourning to less than 24 hours tomorrow, June 21st at 10:00 a.m. for a town council special meeting here in the chambers. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn in a second?
I, I moved it, and I think it's...
And I seconded it.
Yep.
Okay, motion and a second, we can vote. I'm going to predict in a minute that we are adjourned. Is that, do you have a majority vote?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? Okay, there we go, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Less than two hours, Lee.
I know, I know!
It's Eddie that drags the meetings out.